7:30, so we're gonna begin the village board meeting with a pledge. With a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Okay, may I have a motion approving the village board minutes from December 1st, 2022? Thank you. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Was one of you a second, too?
I was the second, he was the first.
Oh, okay. Any additions or corrections? Hearing done, may I have a vote to approve?
Ooh. Oh.
We didn't say aye.
Aye. Any votes? Carried.
I had one cookie and now I'm a little loopy.
Okay. Public comments. Anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board, would you please come to the mic? Give us your name, your address. State your business.
Good evening, folks. My name is Joe Donigan and I own 19 Phillips Street, 15 acres of land in the village. And I've been paying taxes on that land for 40 years, never once late, by the way. And in light of recent decisions, I wanted to come here, talk about a few things and kinda unpack my 40 years of stewardship with that site. 1982, I ended up buying 91 and 93 East United Street, along with 15 acres of land. From a fellow named Bruce Palkowski, we worked it in process gear. 85, I sold off the two-family house to a fellow named Steve Dowd. And in 1986, I was contacted by Egan Real Estate. They were looking around, they wanted to know if I was interested in selling or developing because they had Frank Foddy was the builder they worked with. So, that was 1986. So, from that point on, things started fermenting. I contacted local guy Steve Saner. I contacted WM Engineering, they do a lot of layout and site work. And kinda got the ball rolling. With Steve Saner before I even put boots on the ground with him, cuz he needed to do a topo and boundary survey. I went out and talked to all of my neighbors, door to door, before they even saw anybody walking around. So, I had my young son in tow, we went neighbor to neighbor, he had milk and cookies and I had a history lesson. So, it was the right thing to do, my neighbors were pleased. I kept them appraised every step of the way. We spent three years going back and forth with the planning board. Generally, Russ Lucy was on the planning board at the time, good guy to work with. And we developed a site plan. A lot of people spent a lot of time, a lot of questions were asked and answered. Number of iterations were completed and finally they revised my zoning from R1 to PDD. What happened in 1990? The economy and life got in the way and it didn't happen. It reverted back to R1 at some point in time. And during the time of my stewardship, the library looked at it, the YMC was really serious about it, they optioned it. I think John White was gonna donate some land. The library. I toured Mayor Joe Saracini around once, I don't know if any of you folks were in that tour.
I think I might've gone on that tour.
Okay, yeah. Think we all met at the diner and then hiked the site. Yeah. So, what else happened? That's about it. I was even looking at carving out a piece and building a home for myself, cuz I raised three sons, so. Along with my wife, she was important. So, that's the story about 40 years of yesterdays. And I'm here today to talk about how we can collaborate and cooperate to transform that 15-acre site, underutilized into something that, you know, will serve the tomorrows we will never see. So, comments?
So, you had interest from this particular builder, have you had any other interest? Because one of the things that piqued my interest about it was he said it was priced appropriately. Has anybody else approached you about purchasing that land or doing any other development at all?
Over the years, a developer named Speech was looking at it, home builder in the area. Fits and starts, you know, economy goes up and down.
How have you advertised it as being, is it currently for sale?
It is not currently for sale. But the purpose of my visit tonight is I would like to get it, and I like what I heard about master planning. Master planning is really important, especially in today's environment, so. And City of Syracuse is doing that right now with their Westcott District in the university area. So, it's within the jurisdiction of your municipality to change zoning. Not capriciously or arbitrarily, but based on, you know, a master plan. Absent a master plan, if you have a willing landowner and you look at the site and determine its best use is PDD, then, you know, that's, then you negotiate and collaborate and cooperate. So, you know, I would like to develop the site like we had it and what I have for you folks.
Joe, could you briefly, because none of us were on the board in 1990?
I know.
Briefly tell us what the planning board in the 80s approved for back in there, what their concept was? I'm just curious. I meant briefly, visual aids.
But wait, there's more. So, I don't know if you can stick it up somewhere, but.
Sorry. With those, like townhouses or?
These are four-unit patio home townhouses, that's it.
Kinda like in Village Green or something like?
Yeah, yeah. And maybe in the center units, the common walls would be maybe a single level with a townhouse on the end. The interior units more catering to, you know, my group. And.
I bet that's my group, too, huh?
Yeah, I'm just saying. And maybe the end units are two stories for young families, but, I mean, we went through three years between, and I have all the minutes, I mean, we can get. And, you know, this is, I'm initiating the conversation, you know? I'm back at it. But, I mean, this was, this was 30 years ago. Did it age well? Is it relevant today? What I liked about the site, I know, I know, it's all new to you guys.
How many units total is that?
68.
So comparable to what?
Well, no.
Comparable, they were 70.
But I don't know that it's comparable in regards to traffic.
Oh, I don't either.
It's definitely not comparable in the fact that we would own the road, we would own the utilities, we would own the sewers, we would own the plowing, we would own.
You don't know that.
It's kind of small.
I mean, it could be a private thing with a homeowners association.
Right.
Who knows? I mean, I don't think we need to get into that.
It was not, okay, it was PDD. And again, it was three years of, I have all the minutes and we, a lot of questions were asked and answered. Steve Saner did a great job and I really like this layout here because, have you walked the site, are you familiar with the site?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Actually.
So, you see, it's a swale, it's more like a gully. And the way he's got it set up, I mean, the sightlines and the elevations are really nice where it comes down here. Cuz you got a nice shot and you got nothing on the road and, again, this isn't the final iteration, but.
I'm just curious, I don't want you to go on and on with, cuz Baldwinsville of 1988 doesn't exist anymore.
Absolutely, yeah. But my question is, did it age well? Where's the need? And how are we collectively, how can we collectively meet the needs of tomorrow with my site? You know? Is the best use sitting there is 15 acres of dirt?
Housing would be fine, I think.
That's right.
I think housing would be fine, I would like to see single-family homes there. What came in front of me the other day was not single-family homes, so that project is not single-family homes.
The problem, this is a tough site. I could build single-family homes, but I would completely trash any character that we could design into the site. I wanna have the conversation because we had it back then and we said we want it open and, you know, this type of cluster housing leaves a lot of open area, but then again, how do you manage the open area? Is it the homeowners association? And again, I know this is all new to you folks. But I have little handouts that includes this map in a smaller version, along with some of the archival material I put together. And again, 7,500-foot lots, single-family, you know, I could put 88 in there. And we had this conversation with the planning board before, do we wanna destroy the site or do we wanna add to the fabric of the village, you know?
And that's what we hope to see is someday, oh, a development proposal that fits into the fabric of the village.
So, my ask is.
What is that? We don't know.
Where do I go from here? I wanna get it, I'd like, I know you're talking master planning, that's a really important thing. But how can I fit in the master plan? And do I fit into it? And is this still relevant? Where's the need and how do you meet the need?
Do you plan to be the developer or do you plan to sell the property?
I wanna develop it, I wanna have a hand in it. And I, probably none of the neighbors that I talked to, a generation ago.
Just anymore.
Is Jun Han, is she still in town?
I don't know, but I know there's a few that talked about they used to walk to school through the woods and they've been there a while.
Oh, okay. Anyway. So, I'd like to know how I can go forward. I really wanna have a hand in this because I've got 40 years of stewardship on the site and I feel like my roots run deep, you know? So.
Well, let's let our attorney come up with his request for proposal first. We find out where that's going and hopefully you'll be in the loop of when that plan's around.
And I have, I only have five of these, so.
We can share.
Maybe the people are the best at sharing.
We'll share with each other.
We'll share.
I don't play well with others.
Is that a tip for me or?
Mike and I can share one as well.
Thank you.
We'll send one on to the mayor as well.
It's just kinda archival stuff, but.
And Greg, do you have this stuff in a file in your office, you think, somewhere?
I know we do, we have the minutes and we've got some other plans that we've developed.
All right, cuz otherwise I wanna make sure you got.
With Ale Baker's picture right on it? His son is sitting right here, he's our treasurer, so.
No kidding, I got to know your dad a little bit when we were going through this, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Pretty tight little village here.
Does anybody else have any other comments that would like to make at this time?
I have. I have my hat, too, one. So I don't slip. My name's Sally, I live on Mechanic Street. I had a question, I don't know if it's gonna be unfurled during the meeting, about raising the tax cap? I thought it was like, there was like a motion coming up.
That is, yeah, that's on the agenda.
Will it be explained, like why it's happening and?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do it every, we do it every year, Sally, but.
Can you raise the cap?
No, we don't raise the cap, we pass a law that allows us to avoid the cap. It's a procedural thing that we go through because as we develop the budget, if we don't do it, then we're stuck.
So, the cap is raised every year?
No, 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 no. This has nothing to do with a cap.
But if you overwrite it, isn't that?
We're taking it off the table as something that limits us in the budget process. Our intention is always to do our best to not raise the rate.
We've never gone over that, but we always pass this law.
Okay.
Penalties evolved if we do go over and don't declare that we are.
But that'll come up.
I was so confused because I'm new to these meetings and.
We'll address it when we get to it.
All right, that was fun. Well, this is my only time to talk, so I figured I'd ask.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the audience, I assume there's no other comments. Moving on to trustees' comments. We'll start with Nate.
I'll stick to the agenda, like.
You don't want to add anything?
Well, Bill's got a game on Saturday night, if you guys wanna, you know, take a little nap and then watch the Bills crush the Dolphins in the snow on Saturday night, that'd be nice, but outside of that, you know? Syracuse's men's soccer team won the national championship, you know, that's another thing that's, you know, I'm the sports guy, so. Yeah, first ever, it was awesome, 7-6. Last shot, they beat Indiana, they beat Indiana on the last shot, which was nice, cuz in 87, that did not happen that way, so.
Outside of that, I'll stick to the agenda, thanks, Bruce. Okay. Trustee Seaco, do you have anything to add?
I do, actually, I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays in light of the season that are in. Other than that, just the agenda.
Okay, I'm sure Nate wanted to do that, too, but.
No, no, that's her thing, she's a Christmas, she's Christmas. That's her, I'm not stepping on that coattail.
I have nothing to add to the agenda, so, well.
I would like to add an item to the agenda, a resolution that will give our treasurer, Mark Baker, the approval for signing checks in the absence of the village justice from their accounts. And I'll read in full when we actually.
That will be item I.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay.
I'll also stick with the agenda.
That brings us to the mayor, I think.
Just a couple of things. I wanna thank Shep and Eric and Nate for agreeing to be our negotiating team for the EPA contract, it's probably gonna start in February, the negotiation. It's, it'll be interesting for the two new guys and Shep has been through this a couple times, so he's got the experience and bring your young guys along with you, Shep. Let's see what else we got. Oh, Ashley Casey is leaving the messenger, you know, she's done a pretty good job, nighttime on the board of covering the village for what they do, I mean, not compared to the Al Baker days, for sure, but Ashley's got the job of burning dairy and sales and marketing and will be leaving, I think, in another week or so. So, I obviously can call her, I, you know, ask her to get something in for us, and she was always very good about it. We'll see what they do to replace her. Couple of things with the Chamber, I saw on Facebook today, the Chamber had some aerial photos, somebody had taken of the parade of lights going through the four corners, spectacular pictures, if you haven't seen them, on the Chamber site. The Chamber's also having a holiday mixer, or in all you board members, certainly are welcome, they're around here today on the 21st of December at 3 o'clock at the BG1, right there at the four corners, 1 West Tennessee Street, chance to see some of the business people. I'm sure it'll be fun, probably some good food to eat. I don't know how many had a chance to ride around the village after dark, but our village is pretty spectacular when it comes to Christmas lights. There are some great decorations, streets that have six, seven houses in a row, all decorated up nice. You don't have to go to the lights on the lake for a good show, just right up and down our streets. And I echo Ruth Seaco's comment about happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And look out for those that are in tough shape right now. There's people that mentally, emotionally are tired, could use a phone call from a neighbor, a friend, a good time, a good Christmas present to offer is your friendship. And that's all I have.
Okay. That takes us to our department head, starting off with our attorney.
We have had a discussion regarding the master plan and either putting out an RFP or having discussions. These are professional services, so they don't necessarily, again, depends on what the board wants to do. It's not necessarily have to be bid out, but if you want to do that, what I can do is talk to EDR and SAKPA and see what their suggestions are.
Be nice to how much something like that would cost.
Yes.
If it fits within our budget. See what our treasurer can find.
So, anyway, I can do that and I can also, I will, our office represents many other towns and also in the county and other counties, so I'll also find out what experience has been going on relative to the planning and then see what, I can get a proposal back to the board or an outline of what the possibilities are. I think as far as the moratorium issue is concerned, there would be a local law, there would have to be a public hearing, but I think it's premature to set a public hearing for that. As we see later on in the agenda, the first meeting in January is gonna be taken up anyway. But other than that, I just wish everybody happy holidays and I'll stick with the agenda.
Thank you.
Wish everybody a safe drive home.
You go the farthest.
Moving on to our village clerk.
I just want to introduce a new business in the village, it's called Just Be Kids and it's located at 43 Oswego Street, Suite 100. Just Be Kids is a children's wellness center where kids can focus on being themselves. Currently housed in the building are therapists, providing mental health therapy, play therapy, support groups and skill-building groups. There's also a tutor in the building. There is space for community service providers to host events that engage children and caregivers in a variety of activities and programs, like their newest program called Adopt a Grandparent with Silver Fox Adult Day Center. There will be a play center in the larger portion of the building and this play center will focus on the quality of play versus the quantity of play by engaging children in play experiences that help develop, strengthen and practice their social, emotional skills. And this is a much-needed addition to the community, so.
Just for reference, that's the old library building.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, cuz I'd written 43 as well.
It happens to be my daughter-in-law, so.
It's the old Firestone store or Woolworth's. It was Firestone before it was Woolworth's.
My age was the library, where I did all my study.
It's right over there.
And otherwise, I will stick to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our treasurer, Mr. Baker.
Just happy holidays, everybody, and I'll stick to the agenda.
I noticed we didn't get one of those, whatever they're called.
Abstract.
The abstracts this time.
Oh, that's not in with the, oh, that's, that's our bad.
Well, maybe it was a holiday.
Sorry.
So new at it.
Working, preparing the budget has like sucked all the oxygen out of the room, so.
I understand. I don't see a senior center coordinator, so I guess unless Chuck wants a fill-in for that, we'll move on to the superintendent of public works.
She get all the cookies.
But you didn't even get a chair.
I know. The big thing with us is the snow, now the snow started, so that's kind of the major thing now. Although the water department is gonna be out at 11 o'clock tonight, there's a problem on Oswego Street, there's a break out there, so the water will be off of some of those homes, we've all been notified. Hopefully we get in and out of there quick, so they're gonna start that at 11 o'clock. The Brown Street culvert by Kosse, that was part of the money that we used for the ARPA money, how we got that put in this week, it was a couple of days, went real well, we extended that 20 feet into the ditch, that came out, that came out really well, that they did a great job with that. The water department is hoping, we're still hoping to get to bid on the water department, we're hoping to get in December, engineer advised me it's not gonna happen till maybe the first part of January, but we're just hoping that everybody gets all their stuff and we can get out to bid. We gotta get that going and we're just, we're waiting on engineer reports now and other than that, other than that, unless there's any questions.
You said the last meeting, we rejected a tree bid and you said that's back out?
Tree bid's back out, yep.
When is that due when?
I'm not sure.
I believe it's the 21st.
Okay.
The bid opening will be.
Yep.
Of December or January?
December.
So, we have had some more interest on it, we'll see, we'll see who shows up and hopefully we get that taken care of. It'd be great.
If anyone else has any questions, we'll move on to our code officer, Greg.
I just wanna remind everyone, all the residents, that it's snowing again and that residents are responsible for clearing the snow off the sidewalks that are in front of their property and that the village does not engage in those activities, it is their homeowner's responsibility for that, so. And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to our police chief, Mike.
Nothing other than happy holidays unless there's questions, Bruce.
Okay, I'm impressed yet again, you have a different uniform this evening.
Try and keep your guessing.
I guess.
Usually I'm in our standard uniform, but tonight it's just a little different, so.
Pending business, I see none.
Good.
So, we'll move on to new business, get a motion accepting the retirement of Maureen Butler as village clerk effective Tuesday, January 30th, 2023. No one say anything, no one's helping. I'll make a motion.
I'll stick it with sadness.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Very sad discussion. Gonna miss Maul a lot, I'm very happy that she's gonna be able to retire and enjoy a I'm very happy that she's going to be able to retire and enjoy the grandkids. Sometimes you don't realize how important people are. I do, in this case, because everything I do, I end up asking Mo the right way to do it. And so I, for one, will be lost without her, but Jody is coming along quickly as a replacement. And I think things will be good. I am happy for Mo.
Thank you.
Yes, we all will be sorry to see the CEO leave.
I was just saying real quickly, Mike, and certainly been a. Certainly been the cornerstone for us whenever we have any personnel issues or things that we're not supposed to do. She has a very nice way of telling us not to do it. But she's, she's been.
I'm using that nice way, that's fine.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, we have conversations every day, and Mo knows the village, she knows the job. She's been fantastic. Not really thrilled that she's leaving, but I guess we're happy. And God bless you, that you can go, and you will be missed, there's no question. And like you say, Jody and Melissa are coming on good in there, but you've done well here. You know, you've been a resident, you've been around even from the tri-county days. We've all known you, but you've really, you've really fit into that job well. And we work day-to-day with her, and it's just been fantastic. So I would be voting yes, but. But congratulations.
I'll have much more to say at a later point in time, but obviously, you know, I've worked with Mo her entire time here at the village, and Chuck and I have been here 35 years. And I've seen a lot of employees come and go. And obviously, Mo, being over in the clerk's office, having been the treasurer at one point in time, and knows the village really inside and out. And is one of those people that folks in the public might not realize is really the backbone of village government. And board members come and go, and to have someone here for 20 years in a position that really just solidifies what is going on and provides that level of continuity across the board, so when people join the board, leave, mayors come and go. She's been here for that entire period of time. And the level of professionalism and commitment to this village certainly is commendable, to say the least. And I'll have more to say at a later point in time when we celebrate her retirement fully. But there are some big shoes to fill by Judy, by Jody. I have no doubt that she's going to be capable, but we all have to keep in mind that we can't expect her to be Mo because she's not, and it's not a criticism of her, it's a credit to Maureen Butler.
Can I, can I have my two seconds in the? I want to echo the same comments. You know, I'm the new kid in the, in the group here. Only been treasurer for a year and hopped into that frying pan. And really, really got, have gotten a ton of support from Mo, who knows everything about everything. And probably one of the greatest assets that she's had relative to my role is that you can just talk to her about something and she comes in half hour later and says, it's done. I did it. And you're like, I was thinking I was going to have to do that. And she, she just does it. And she's a great asset to the village. We've been personal friends outside of this for a lot of years. And so I will miss her. And on the heels of that, the person up the highway there on TPW who's going to go, too. I'm like, she's another big financial asset to the village. And, but we will really miss you, so don't go. There's still time. You guys can vote no.
Well, thank you. It's been, it's been a great experience, and I've enjoyed everyone I've worked with, all the different mayors. And it's been good, but I'm, it's time. But I'll be around for Jody to bounce ideas off of or find out anything, like if she needs any help. So thank you.
That's good enough.
All in favor of Mo's retirement?
Aye.
I guess.
Opposed?
What if we say no? Does she have to say?
Okay, the motion carried. Item B is a motion to appoint Jody DePaulis as village clerk at a rate of $56,000 a year effective January 30th, 2023, after Mo's retirement goes into effect. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think Jody will do a great job. She's, she's learned to deputy justice very quickly. And I know that Mo has been working with her to help her, you know, feel for the job. And I think she'll step in and do a great job, so we're in good hands.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 5th, 2023, at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to amend Section 324-19 of the Village Code to provide restrictions for parking and standing vehicles in village parking lots and property.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. D, motion to set a public hearing on, for Thursday, January 5th, 2023, at 7:45 PM to hear public comments regarding the Restore New York program application. These Restore New York grants funds will support the site's redevelopment into a mixed-use district for commercial, retail, and residential use to benefit Village of Baldensville residents.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item E. Motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 5th, 2023, at 8:00 PM to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Mayor, do you want to discuss?
Yeah. I think you guys covered it, but just to repeat a couple of things. We have never exceeded the tax cap. But if we do, we have two options, to not have the law or have the law. If we don't have the law, we can get penalized. If we have the law in place, it's not a good thing to exceed the tax cap, but at least if we have the law in place, we'll be covered. There's, there are municipalities who have had things happen where in June, after their budget's been in place for a few months, something that they passed to put into the budget gets turned out. It can't be that way in the budget, and then it gets removed, and suddenly you're over the tax cap. And then right along behind that comes a penalty for doing it. So we do it to cover ourselves. We have not gone over the tax cap. I have to go over the tax cap, it's just protecting ourselves. That's all it is.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item F. Motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 5th, 2023, at 8:15 regarding the adoption of the proposed 2023-2024 village budget.
Moved.
Second.
I would think we could move this up to 8:05. Whatever. We've already covered the tax cap. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, I meant to say something, and we were done, I spoke too quick.
Do you want to talk now, or you want us to finish voting?
Go ahead, finish your.
We did.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Motion carried, year up.
Just remind everybody that we're going to adjourn the meeting and then restart our budget session about 10 minutes after the meeting's over. And hopefully that won't last too long. I don't want anybody to leave.
You're talking this evening.
Okay, we're back for this meeting.
Okay. When Dick spoke to me on the phone with all these public hearings, he told me we're going to go in and out of the village board meeting in between, which I'm thinking is going to be chaotic, but whatever. Where are we? Item G, motion to appoint Mary Krego and Joe Anna Taylor as election inspectors for the March 21st, 2023 village election at a pay rate of $125.
Make a motion.
Second? I'll second it. I'll discuss. Is it $125 each?
Yes.
Okay. Is this a ballot box election again?
It is.
That's a day, right?
Yeah.
It's, they sit here all day. Per hour. It's a wonderful job.
I hear from you tonight.
I just wanted to clarify. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion approving the village justice annual audit for the year ending February 28th, 2022, done by Linda Gabor, CPA of Grossman Saint Armore, and authorizing the mayor to sign said audit.
Moved.
Second. All in favor? Or any questions, or? Everybody has a copy of it.
Yep.
Yeah, took a look at it.
Any discussion?
Not really.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Takes us to item I.
All right. I would like to make a motion that village treasurer, Mark Baker, be approved to sign checks and otherwise transact on behalf of the Baldensville Village Court on the following court bank accounts in the absence of the village justice honorable Elijah Hewling, and that he be added as a signer-onset account. It's the bail account and the fine account both held at M&amp;T Bank. And I'm not even going to read what the last four numbers of the bank accounts are because I don't think that needs to be in the public record.
Okay. I'll second your motion.
Okay. If you have questions, ask Mark. I'm just reading from the script.
I will ask Mark questions, but at another time and place. Anybody else have any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. There you go, Mark.
You can do it now.
That takes us to a motion to pay bills as audited.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Dick, is this budget stuff within the context of the meeting? Do we adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Public session, public work session.
Work session.
Okay. And motion to adjourn the meeting at whatever time Mo comes up with?
8:13.
8:13.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Who do you want here? Anyone?
I think all we need is Mark.
Okay.